Good morning. I'd like to call to order the second day of our monthly state board meeting. I believe that clock in front of us is just a little bit behind as our computers iPads in front of us are indicating a little bit more advanced time. So to get started this morning, we'd like to welcome everybody to this Friday session. I wanted to pass along the regrets of our chair, Ms. Newton, who unfortunately had a conflict for the first part of this meeting, but hopefully by the end of today, we will have the opportunity to see her. For members of the audience who did not join us yesterday, just to let you know that we have already covered items Report 7, Report 8, Report 9, and Report 10. So we will not be revisiting those items today. And if you'd like to see a transcript of that conversation, that'll be available online. So thank you. We will proceed then with Report 1, the Chair's Report. I'm afraid Ms. Newton didn't leave me any items to pass along, but I did want to give the space and opportunity to each of our colleagues if anyone had reports to share with the rest of the state board this morning, if you could kindly indicate so. Yes, Ms. Newton?
I don't have a report, but I was pleased to be invited and attend the groundbreaking or the opening of the new stadium in North Hall Rock as their high school progresses. And then the ribbon cutting for Glendale Elementary. They're doing a lot of good things over there with their building programs. And you can see the excitement. And our commissioner was at the Glendale opening and really pumped up the kids and made them realize that it was all about them. And thank the community for passing the village. And the Chamber of Commerce, the city of North Hall Rock, and the school, and that community all work so well together. And it's very evident in the way the schools are progressing.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Newton. Any other of our colleagues that... yes?
One quick thing, won't surprise you, I've kept up with our friend Jonathan Crossley, the mother in me. But I had great conversations with him. Of course, he's very optimistic, as you might imagine that he would be. But he does face serious challenges. And one of the big challenges, and I think this is something that applies to every school in the state, particularly those schools that are in areas, high poverty areas, he has a difficult time finding partners in the community and people who are willing to be involved and engaged. And as he says, "I've knocked on every door. I've made phone calls." It's just he's true engagement and true community partner. So I urge all of us, wherever we live, to do the best that we can in our daily work to encourage folks. You know, there's a lot of, we hear a lot from the business community about their expectations for education, but we need boots on the ground. And we need folks in schools mentoring. We need business partnerships that can provide extra resources. And just knowing that there's someone out there that cares. So highly encourage all of you and me to do the best that we can. I personally am taking my cross care group from Blassey Hogs United Methodist Church. We range in age from 82 to I'm the youngest.
That's what each...
But we're going on the 22nd to have lunch at Batesline and take a little tour. And I'm just going to try to get as many people as I can in these schools that are in academic distress so that they can understand what the real challenges are as well. And then secondly, yesterday when I was leaving, the chancellor from the University of Arkansas Community College at Batesville introduced herself to me. And she said, "You know, we're so interested in creating strategic plan for education in Batesville. And this is what we're doing with Impact Independence County," which I think you heard them mention yesterday. And she said, "But this through with Arkansas," she said, "this is the plan. This is what we can do. And then we'll be doing something in concert with the rest of this day." And it just was, I thought this is just the way it's supposed to work. So I'm hopeful that we'll see more of that. But I did think yesterday was a great day.
Fantastic. Thank you. Would any of our other colleagues like to share updates, reports? Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you to Ms. Newton and Saviors for those wonderful encouraging reports.
And don't say anything about how old the people are in their age. I mean, whoever's writing this stuff down, take that 82 out of it.
Yeah, you definitely don't want to get in a bad side of an 82-year-old. I will say that. We respect them too much. Well, with that, passing on to Report 2. Commissioner Key, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Digital Learning Day is something that we celebrate in February. And the next one will be February 17th of 2016. But in Arkansas, Digital Learning Day is every day. For those of you that do not know or not familiar with Arkansas iTunesU, it is one of what I would consider one of the premier resources for educators, not only in the state, but we know that from, it's amazing, the information you can get from iTunesU, but we know that there are educators from Arkansas that post items on Arkansas iTunesU. And these items are accessed by educators all over the country because of the quality of the work. So we are reaching out through Arkansas iTunesU to schools and asking them to submit videos for a new collection, which we're calling Digital Learning Every Day. And educator Stacy Caldwell from Clarendon School District submitted the following video that we want to play for you.
Yeah, it reminds that it can be more than just with an informed opinion. Realize that it can also be based on the fact that maybe they're familiar with the subject because they're familiar with the facts of studies, or maybe they have firsthand experience. So they're all facts of their study.
Most of them.
Studies, very good. For example, Jimmy had an example when he was doing one on the NFL that was written by a former coach. And he says, "Well, he has experience to coach." So that's also what informs this opinion.
Now, sometimes when we read poetry, we get general feelings about them. They may seem uplifting and humorous, or maybe sad or ominous. And there's another word in that idea, tone. To get more specific, let's see if you can find it.
In poetry, you define tone as: A, the pitch of a poet's voice; B, the highest parts of the stressed syllables; C, the repetitive sounds of end rhymes; or D, the emotional coloring or attitude of the word.
communities in eastern part of our state, faces a number of challenges. But as you can see here, I think Clarendon has no, they don't accept excuses for not being able to provide digital learning opportunities for their students. And I think that's a great example of what we want to see all over the state of Arkansas. So schools that want to participate in the Digital Learning Every Day program may contact Katrina Kraft and Donnie Lee is at OUR Co-op. Katrina is one of ours, works for Dr. Saunders over at Research and Technology. And you can email her katrina.craft@arkansas.gov or contact Donnie Lee at OUR Co-op to participate in this collection or others on the Arkansas iTunesU. And that's my report, Madam Chair.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Any questions for the Commissioner? Wonderful. So passing on now to Report 3, Recognition of the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science/Technology. These are always those exciting reports that we feel tremendously humbled and privileged to be able to be part of. And the two exceptional individuals that we'll be recognizing today are Brian Leonard and Amanda Jones. With that, Mr. Owen, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, if it pleases the Board and Commissioner. Little background on the Presidential Awards. The Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, they are the nation's highest award for our K-12 mathematics and science teachers that is available to them. And as of last year, it opened to computer science teachers, by the way, just will throw that in there. But it is the highest ranking award that a teacher may receive in the United States in these two subject areas. Up to 108 teachers are selected each year. The Presidential awardees, they each receive a certificate signed by the President of the United States, a trip to Washington DC to attend a series of recognition events, and professional development opportunities. And probably one of the more important things, a $10,000 award made to them from the National Science Foundation. Since 1983, more than 4,300 teachers have received this award across the nation. And we are going to recognize two Arkansas teachers for the 2013 National Award. That is how arduous this process is, that it takes two years for them to make a selection at a national level of who receives this award. So it typically runs two years behind our state's election process. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my science counterpart, Ms. Michelle Snyder, who is also a state coordinator for PMAS, but she is on the science side. So she can introduce her awardee first. My mother taught me ladies go first, so.
Good morning. Michelle Snyder, Science Curriculum Advisor and the State Science PMAS Coordinator. Thank you so much for this opportunity to acknowledge a fantastic science teacher. Ms. Jones has been an educator for 15 years, 12 of which she has been teaching at Poe and High School. And we have the privilege of superintendent of Poe and School District with us today. She currently teaches all of the rigorous high school science courses that you can possibly imagine. She teaches chemistry, physics, biology, AP biology, environmental science, anatomy and physiology, college biology, and college environmental science. So that's a great acknowledgement as well. In addition to this award, Ms. Jones was named the Grant County Teacher of the Year in 2005, Arkansas's Outstanding Biology Teacher of the Year in 2012, as well as the Arkansas Senior Beta Club State Sponsor from 2013 to 2015. So with that, I'd like to have your opportunity to acknowledge Ms. Jones.
Thank you very much. It's an honor and a privilege to be here. Like Michelle said, my name's Amanda Jones. I teach high school at Poe and High School, where I attended junior high and high school as well. I grew up in south central Arkansas, attended elementary school at Carthage in Dallas County, small rural school, and graduated from Poe and High School, which is in Grant County, and again, a small rural school. And so at being here, it's just, it's a huge honor. But I try every day to let my students who are in those rural areas of our state see that you can accomplish anything you put your mind to. And I try to do that by living that example. It's hard to even talk about it. But my former high school teacher is sitting up there with you today. And it is an absolute honor to be here with her, to see her with you, because she taught me the same thing I try to teach my kids, that you can do this. You can do what you put your mind to. And we don't have all the things that a lot of larger districts have. We don't have all the things that a lot of richer districts have, but we don't need those. We love our kids. We work hard for them every day. And that's really all those kids need. That's all I needed when I was growing up. And that's all they still need today. It's great to have the extra things. And we work hard to get those so they can have every experience possible. But what we need is for you all to support us as we work around this state in every type of school, in the large schools, in the small schools, in those richer districts, and the ones that are less fortunate. Because we have those students every day that, you know, they may only eat when they're at school. And we take care of them. We learn who those kids are. And they may have never been to college. There may never be anyone in their family who's been there. But we want them to be able to go if that's their dream. And so we work hard to try to help those students reach those goals. And we appreciate everything that you do here and the decisions that you make that help us make that possible for our students. So thank you very much.
Well, it is my pleasure to introduce, and Brian, I hate to tell you, it's going to be hard to follow that act, but it is my pleasure to introduce an individual who has become a friend of mine over the past few years. He has, I'll read his biography here shortly, but just to give you a little bit additional background information, Mr. Leonard has served our state not only through his teaching capacities within his local district, but he has sat on numerous committees for the Department of Education, writing frameworks for mathematics. He was actually part of our five-member team that wrote the mathematics transitional course for SRAB. So Mr. Leonard has a longstanding history with the curriculum instruction unit and the capacity that I served as math specialist under that unit in assisting me. And I want to tell him I appreciate that on a personal level. But Mr. Leonard has taught advanced placement mathematics to 11th and 12th graders at Lake Hamilton High School for the past eight years. He spent the previous two years teaching at Academics Plus Charter School, and the previous year, teaching at the University of, help me out, Mr. Leonard?
Canberra.
There you go, in Australia. Brian works hard to make advanced mathematics courses accessible to a wide range of students. Extensive research, numerous conferences, and relationships with AP math teachers from around the state and country have helped Brian dramatically increase enrollment and achievement in AP Statistics and AP Calculus at his school. As the lead AP mathematics teacher for his school, Brian developed numerous activities to improve the program. He was instrumental in developing vertical team meetings in his district and bring together all math teachers to collaborate on mathematics curriculum from lower grades all the way through high school. Brian has presented mathematical research, as well as AP exam preparation sessions in AP Statistics and AP Calculus throughout Arkansas. Brian has a BS in mathematics from Henderson State University, Go Ready's, and a MS in mathematics from the University of Arkansas at Little Rock. He is a National Board certified in adolescents and young adulthood mathematics. And on a side note, I will say that I attended one of Mr. Leonard's lessons the other day in AP Calculus, and I was thoroughly impressed in the curriculum that he is writing and to implement within his classroom. It's a very novel way that he is teaching AP Calculus. And I expect to see his book on my shelf within about 10 years. So, him. But with that, I would like to call Mr. Leonard up. So if it pleases the Board, so he may address you. Mr. Leonard.
Anthony, I don't know where you went, but thank you for the introduction. I don't know how to follow Amanda, so I'd almost wanted to say ditto. But I do want to thank the Board for the opportunity to be here today. You know, I guess it sounds cheesy, but I'm just honored to do something that I love to do. I mean, they pay me to interact with kids. To be able to work with kids every day is an honor. And to be recognized, to just do what I love, is truly humbling. If I can be honest, I moved to Arkansas 20 years ago, and as a high schooler, which dates my age as well. But I remember when my parents came in and said, "We're going to move to Arkansas." And in my mind, I pictured some hillbilly in overalls that was going to walk in and say, "Here's mathematics." I could say, that was my first impression. And as a student in Arkansas, that quickly changed. I saw some amazing teachers. I went to Camden Fairview High School, Cardinals. And I had some amazing teachers there. And now being involved as a teacher myself, I can truly say, you know, being recognized at a national level, I'm able to see that our state, thanks to the work that you've done, thanks to some innovators within our state, we are not the bottom of the barrel in education, but we are now becoming leaders in education throughout the nation. And there's, I could list a ton of names that have made that impact, but I guess I'm just honored to be a small part of that progress. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Owen and Ms. Snyder, but more importantly, Mr. Leonard and Ms. Jones. I'll take the privilege of chair today to say a few words, and then invite my other members of the Board. And I'm sure our Teacher of the Year wants to say a few words as well. But I'll take the privilege of speaking first and just say, it is really us who are honored here today. The two of you truly do embody everything that we hope for, not just for our teachers, but for our children. And we could not be prouder that you all are ambassadors of Arkansas, and that you're doing what you do, and that you have responded to the calling of teaching. Thank you so much. There are not words for us to express how grateful we are. And for any of my other colleagues, I see our Teacher of the Year fighting here to speak as well.
I can't tell you how proud I am of y'all. It's been hard for me to talk. But this is an amazing young lady, and I'm sure Mr. Manning is an amazing teacher. But they teach every day, but you can tell from what they said, they do more than teach. They give their heart and their soul to their students. And they mentor, and they go above and beyond each and every day. The science and the math, that's just extra. You know, what they do for kids every day, and it's just, they love them. They love them like they're their own. And I am so proud of both of you, especially Amanda. Amanda's one of my former students, so I'm especially proud of her. But, you know, thank y'all for what you do. You know, I know it's not easy. I know it takes a lot of time away from their own families that you give up, but you're making a difference in kids' lives. And we appreciate it. Thank you so much for what you do.
Yes, Ms. Stephen.
As a mom of four children, I have four children, two boys and two girls. And I once, at one time, homeschooled them. And I put them in public school. And to see what you do, to know what you do, and to see it from your heart, that you love what you do, that you love children, that is my wish and my hope and my desire for my children, that they would have teachers that put their heart and soul into what they do, probably as much as, almost as much as a parent would. So when I drop my children off to school, I hope and I wish that they had teachers like you. And what you do really, I appreciate it. Thank you so much, from my heart, really.
I've never, I don't know either one of you. I just met Amanda up for the meeting, and I'm emotional. I don't have a relationship. I do want you to know how much we appreciate the uncommon walk that you've chosen. You're very, very good at what you do. You're excellent at what you do. And you've chosen to go about the way you spend your time and your energy wrapping that excellence around these kids that you love and that you care about. And I think every person in the room can think back to a teacher that made a huge difference for them by believing in them yes, but also being excellent at teaching them something, and imparting an ability to do that carries with, carries through the rest of your life. So anyway, thank you. You're role models in so many different ways. And for all of us, this is so encouraging. This is what we want to be as a state for all of our kids. So thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you to my colleagues as well for joining us. This really is one of the special things that we get to do on the state board. And it really does, sometimes I miss the hard days and the hard decisions. Really, really does remind us and ground us in what we're trying to do here and what we're all about. So with that, reporting, moving on to Report 4, titled 1, Distinguished Schools. Ms. Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, State Board of Education and future keys.
We thank you for the opportunity to share with you this morning about...
We thank you for the opportunity to share with you this morning about the National Title I Distinguished Schools. We have two schools in two different categories this morning here to be recognized. They also have been recognized at the National Title I Association Meeting, which was in Salt Lake City, Utah, this year. Our agency supported them in going to people from each school, and most of the time, more go because they're so excited. And we're excited. And this is an annual thing that we do for the Title I schools in Arkansas. And I'm not going to keep going on before I lose my voice. Allergies here. At this time, we're going to ask Desark, the superintendent and the principal, to come to receive the plaque from the commissioner, please. And it's in recognition for 2014-2015 National Title I Distinguished Schools exceptional student performance. Our second recognition is Seventh Street Elementary School located in North Little Rock, and this is for closing the achievement gap between student groups. And if the superintendent and principal will come, thank you. Ms. Will Cox.
Madam Chair, if it's appropriate, I would like to invite the superintendents that are here to introduce the rest of their team members that came, so we can recognize all the team members that are part of the efforts that, so if they could come now and have some liberty to introduce their folks.
That would be appropriate, and we would also welcome any words about lessons you've learned, best practices, things that we can glean from your success, and thank you and are grateful for all that both of you all have accomplished.
Well, thank you for recognizing Desark Elementary School. I don't think I can take credit for this because I was the high school, the high school principal at Desark last year, but regardless whether I was a superintendent or not, the foundation was laid by our teachers. And our students at Desark Elementary School are great, work hard, but a lot of that goes back to our teachers. We have high expectations for our students, and they engage the students every day in the classroom. You walk through the hallways, you see engagement instruction happening all day long. But I'd like to recognize Ms. Diane Tipton. She's a fourth-grade teacher at Desark Elementary School. Ms. Courtney Skoda, she teaches sixth grade at the elementary school. Ms. Dana Rooks is our elementary principal. And Ms. Judy Ditten is Federal Programs. And thank you again for recognizing our school.
Well, from North Little Rock and the Board of Education, we want to thank you for this award. You know, if you imagine walking into a school and you see the students are stepping off of the bus, and you see that excitement in those students, you see those teachers walking from their cars in the morning, and they're excited, that's the kind of school that Seventh Street is. It's just an amazing group of teachers and staff. They work well together. Pam Will Cox, the principal, has done a tremendous job there. And what's so amazing, it's a high poverty school, and they are doing tremendous things there. The commissioner mentioned to me, you know, we're kind of flying under the radar in North Little Rock. Well, that's kind of the way we want to keep it and just teach kids and focus on instruction. And thank you for that award. I'm going to ask the people to stand, as the people that are here today. We have a campus math coach, Ruthie White, literacy coach, Becca Reed, a district literacy specialist, Angie Coclaser, our district school improvement director, Kristy Ratliff, and then Pam Will Cox, our principal.
Well, this is a definitely opportunist report following a first acknowledgment of individuals and what the individual spirits and commitment can bring, but then now with this recognition of, the recognition of the team effort and teams of leaders, with principals, with teachers, all working together, and with those that are most needed. Too often, folks come for us when they're in those circumstances of distress, when unfortunately our role is many times to reflect on what's not going well. So, to be able to celebrate these moments and these accomplishments, thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for your diligence, and we continue to look forward to seeing success and hopefully gleaning from what you've learned. Please share with your other peers, because even apart from the team that you create in your schools, there's that need of community, that feeling of community we hope you feel with the other schools around you and in your districts, but also in the rest of the state. But thank you all for being leaders, and awards really are the least that we can do to do that. This is our honor to be in your presence and to thank you in person for all that you all contribute. Thank you. Just wanted to see if any of my colleagues, okay? Wonderful. Thank you so much, and thank you, Commissioner, for bringing these individuals before us. So, with that, now we'll pass on to Report Five, and this one is a report that I personally couldn't be prouder to introduce and to be chairing in this moment, and that this is one that I was very grateful and humbled to be able to help facilitate. It's a conversation, a report on stakeholders and immigrant parent forums that will be happening across our state of Arkansas, getting to the point that our colleague Ms. Saviors made, that many of us, whether it's us individually or the groups with whom we work, have an opportunity to be able to do something positive ourselves for what's going on. It's not just enough for us to be part of classifying groups or individuals, but let's be part of the solution. And so, I hope that this is humbly a little bit of my contribution, my seat, also in all of my different capacities, trying to do that. And these are two tremendous experts that are not only giving us a couple minutes of their time here, but to let everyone know are actually going to give us several days of their time as they make the tremendous trek with myself from Little Rock to McGee to Monticello to D Queen to Jonesboro to Fort Smith, and will send them off from Springdale, Arkansas. So, they are going to get the full Arkansan tour, and it's very exciting for me that they're starting that and their endeavors with you all as our colleagues on the State Board. So, with that, I proudly recognize Dr. Scott.
Good morning to everyone, and thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. I am Bradley Scott. I am the director of the Equity Assistance Center for Federal Region Six that includes five states in the south-central part of the nation, Arkansas, Texas, Louisiana, Oklahoma, and New Mexico. It is our charge, we are funded through the U.S. Department of Education to provide technical assistance and training to, at no cost, to public school systems as they deal with issues of school desegregation, the creation of equal educational opportunity, or address issues of civil rights for students in public education, ensuring that the civil rights of learners, regardless of their race, their color, their gender, their language, their economic status, their ability or disability, as it were, that they are protected, their civil rights to a quality education are in fact protected. We have worked for years and years and years with many of your districts here in the state of Arkansas, and it will in fact be our privilege to travel with the commissioner throughout this week as we are encountering and speaking to parent groups, particularly immigrant parent groups, and as those parents look at the issues of education for their children in the public schools and the communities in which they live. It is our charge to help school systems, to provide assistance to them, to deal with issues of equal educational opportunity. And to do that through the center that I direct, helping them to build quality schools, it's a great opportunity to see teachers being rewarded for their excellence in classrooms. It's a great, I think, privilege to be in the presence of campuses that are working for all of their learners, and particularly as a superintendent from North Little Rock, I just said a few moments ago, in a high minority school situation or learning situation, even high poverty, and to know that kids can achieve and excel. The kids who are different by many different dimensions can in fact achieve and excel when that is our intention, that is our will, that is our purpose, and as you were saying, Ms. Dean, because we care about what happens to them in the classrooms in public schools. So, we stand on a premise that every child, no matter who he or she is, has the right to a high-quality education that prepares them not only for college but for life. We're of an opinion that every child has the right, no matter where he or she may live, to be taught by a highly qualified teacher, prepared to present curriculum to them in a way that allows them to learn that curriculum, to master it, and to use that learning in such a way to build a better life for himself or herself and their families beyond the school itself. And they have a right to be under the leadership of excellent principals and other leaders who build the school environment, that it takes creating an equity-based environment where the thought is that every learner has the right to be taught by good teachers in an exciting learning environment, and that it's not always easy to build that environment, but that is nonetheless our commitment. And so, my staff and I work hard to ensure that we assist schools and school personnel and other stakeholders to create that kind of high-energy learning environment so that all learners can achieve and excel. I am with a colleague, Dr. Rojaleo Lopez, who will also be traveling with us this week as we go into the communities, working with immigrant parents. We'll be doing these sessions in English and in Spanish to ensure that those whose first language is not English receive the same information and have the same opportunity to also engage and connect with those folks who are creating these school environments. We want to ensure that every learner has a chance to achieve the goals of educational equity. The first goal being high achievement outcomes, no matter where they are and no matter what they're up to, that they can equitably be included, that's another goal, in all of the learning opportunities and the programs in those schools, that they have a right to be, they have access and inclusion, they have a right to be treated equitably, no matter who they are and no matter from where they may come, that they have a right to be treated equitably. They have a real equitable opportunity to learn, no matter who they are, no matter the languages or the differences in characteristics they may bring with them, that they have a right to quality resources to support that learning in those environments, and that there is equitability in terms of shared accountability among those stakeholders. So, we see parents as being a vital part of the stakeholder group, and whether their first language is English or not, that they still have a right to a voice, they have a right to work with the decision-makers who impact their children's lives on a daily basis, and to be counted into the difference that is made for those learners in schools. And so, we'll be talking to parent groups and to stakeholder groups throughout the week as we do this work and make them aware of not only what their rights as parents are, but what their roles and responsibilities as parents are, to put their hands on the schooling that is being created and the educational experiences that their children, their sons and daughters, are being presented with, and to see themselves as partners with those school leaders and teachers who are building this high-quality education for their sons and daughters in schools and classrooms. We're excited about this tour that we will be on. And on behalf of our president and CEO, Dr. Maria Robledo Monticel, we call her Cuca, we are based out of San Antonio, Texas, we are happy to provide these resources at no cost to your State Department of Education, to the communities and the districts with which we will be connecting this week. We are happy to do this and to see ourselves as partners with you in creating good schools and educational experience for the learners of this state. We have done it for more than 30 years, and we are happy to do it this week and for as long as we continue to be funded to provide this kind of support to your state. So, thank you very much for your time, for your attention, and for the extension of the opportunity to have stood in front of you this morning.
Thank you so much, Dr. Smith. And so, with that, I'd like to say, obviously, I've had the opportunity to work at length with Dr. Scott, so I won't keep him at the podium for questions myself, but I didn't know if any of my other colleagues would or have any questions or queries either about their work or about what the efforts will be this coming week. Then more than what I'll end off then, Commissioner, yes?
Just to ask if there'll be a report, a follow-up report at some point in time, or if not in a formal way, something that the department can get that might be helpful in guiding our efforts as well.
Absolutely.
Most definitely.
The degree which we can help with that will be more than helpful this afternoon.
And I would be glad to help present in subsequent meetings, reporting sessions, without a doubt. And then to say, we have formally extended invitations. I was speaking with several of your staff yesterday, Commissioner, about our meetings. We are doing two meetings in each community. One is a stakeholders' meeting that is geared toward more administrators, teachers, other community leaders, with the idea of having a conversation around this of partnership. What are the needs? How can we be helpful in supporting? And then a secondary meeting that is the immigrant parent forum meeting that is going to be the bilingual session so that parents themselves in their own setting and format can be engaged and have that conversation. And so, I do know that several staff members of the ADE have RSBP'd for the various stakeholder meetings. There is one happening this afternoon in Little Rock at 3:00 P.M. If by chance I missed an invitation to somebody, please know it was not intentional and that it is still very much timely to be able to join that meeting tonight. And tomorrow's immigrant parent forum here in Little Rock, if anyone wanted to observe that, is tomorrow morning from 9:00 A.M. until 11:00 A.M., and I'm glad to provide those details, as well as with any of the other communities. But we have very much encouraged ADE staff, and we have also invited members of Forward Arkansas to attend these sessions as well, because that is one thing, and some of you may have read the same articles or maybe not in regards to Forward, but you may have noticed that the word equity is actually not mentioned anywhere in the Forward documents. And that's something that, when we get to the implementation side, right, where the opportunity, that conversation, these closing the gaps, right, are going to be especially important, to make sure that each of those visions is applicable to all Arkansas students, right, and all Arkansas families. And so, this is, again, a very timely effort for a lot of different reasons, but one that, again, with my nonprofit and with the Cradle to Prison Pipeline Initiative, that we're very grateful to have met Dr. Scott and to be very quickly, as I hope you all share that, impressed by him and his organization, Edron. We very much look forward to our week ahead, and yes, we will, we will follow up with a report of outcomes and prospects for next steps. Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Scott. Now, we'll pass on to Report Six, reviewing the dates and format for quarterly progress reports from priority and/or academic distressed schools. Dr. Wild, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm Richard Wild, Program Manager for the School Improvement Unit, and I feel like I should give out an award, but what I'd like to do, but what I'd like to do is, I have some of the School Improvement Unit people here today, so I'd like to introduce them to the board. Tia Frazier, Lisa Canadell, John Harris, Janie Hickman, Madonna Spain, and then Robert Tony, Dr. Tony. And they're the core. They've been the mainstay for the last year and essential in the schools. That said, thank you, what we wanted to do is highlight for the board the reporting dates that we're going to be able to attain this year. And part of that has to do with the school calendars, and we provided you a sample calendar from North Little Rock, just as a sample, so that you could see a whole school student year laid out for you. But for the most part, as you take a look at it, October is the end of the first quarter, so we'll be reporting progress in November on the first quarter. Then, when we move into December, which is the end of the second quarter, because of the winter break, the Christmas the winter break, the Christmas holiday season, for the most part, the people depart right after school lets out, so we won't really be able to access the information until January, and that will make it February when we're actually able to provide the second-quarter report. As we approach then spring break in March, March is the end of the third quarter, and this is the one that's most troublesome to us. For the most part, it will be May before we're able to report out on the third quarter, simply because of the spring break, and then there will also be a testing cycle in there. And so we want to be as less intrusive as we can be, but at the same time, provide the board with accurate information. Then we roll into the end of the year, the fourth quarter, which would be the summative report, and again, because of the due dates to provide information to the board, it will be July before we're able to give the summative report for the entire year. We will be working on that and trying to actually get it to you in June, if at all possible, but because of the posting dates and the end of school dates, and not everybody ends on the same day, so for the most part, that's... Our hope is to be able to provide it to you in June, but safely, what we're saying is, no, it's going to be July, and that way it'll be a positive if we're able to do it in June. To highlight the report, one of the things we did this year is we invited input on the reporting format from principals and from superintendents. We didn't get input from every superintendent nor from every principal, but what we were doing was, we were saying we want to get out of the encouragement of setting low IMOs. So what we want to do is tell a story. We want the school's report to really be a story of what's going on. And so if you look at the 45-day plan form, what we have there is, on the cover sheet, it will identify the school, the principal, the logistical information. Then the first page will be where we're... Actually, just go on to the third page, which is the example. And we talk about IMO areas, and what we do is, we require schools to report in four areas. And of those four areas, they are broad areas and are related to the turnaround principles, and we call them IMO areas, and stands for Interim Measurable Objectives. Okay? And then we also have some schools that are priority status and in academic distress, so they also have ADE recommendations. What we're doing this year is we're aligning this process so that there's not a report on IMOs, and then a report on ADE recommendations, and then an ACTIP plan, and so what we're doing is streamlining what we're asking from the schools, and helping them realize there is just one plan, there are not four or five plans. When we talk about an effective practice area, as is described there, there are many effective practices, so they will be highlighting what is the area that they're working on, what's the effective practice, and then we're assisting them with the full description of what that looks like when it's implemented. And then they will assess, and so they will report out where they're at in relationship to that effective practice and implementation. Then we will ask them to set an objective to move from where they're at to what the research-based effective practice is, and that will be, for all intents and purposes, their IMO. We will ask them to task it then, to say, what are all the tasks that you're going to do? And this is a way, so on the next page where it says "objective and task," this expands, and what they're able to do is tell all of the steps that they've taken to achieve that objective. So it's a way of them telling their whole story, not just a summation of, did you do it or did you not do it? Because we saw a lot of schools that put in a lot of efforts, did a lot of steps, but we in the end just said, nope, didn't make it. So that in and of itself, the way we were reporting, was kind of defeating. The next thing we were doing is asking from the principal to report out to the state board, and what we're asking of the principal is, what support have you received? What are you monitoring? What are your data collection points that you're looking at? And we threw in science, not as something that... This came from the field, it was nothing that we had on here, but the idea of, should we start thinking about how we're monitoring science as students go through the school year? And we said, yes, we probably should start thinking about how we're going to collect data on that. And then the last part is, what are you going to do next quarter? What are you going to change next quarter, if anything? Saying that, then from the leadership team, what we're asking for is just student data. So if you turn to the next page, the school leadership team's report, this is where they would lay out the beginnings of their demographic story and tell us about how many students per grade level, how many students with disabilities per grade level, the EL population by grade level, and then we're asking them to look at the number of students that have five or more referrals. And what we're saying is, let's report out the number of students with multiple referrals, because what we're going to look at over the course of the year is that going up or going down, and then we'll monitor, and they'll be able to report out what they have done to address that problem. So this then becomes both a worksheet for them as well as a reporting document. The next area, if you turn to the page in gray with the gray, and it's the math data quarterly report. One of the things that we have tried to communicate to the schools is that doing quarterly benchmark assessment and an analysis of that is great. However, we need to get to the classroom and what's going on in the classroom, and there should be a system of about every three weeks, some kind of data collection on the progress related to what I just taught as a teacher. And we call that pre-test, post-test. The pre-test would be so that you could differentiate for students, the post-test would be, did the students learn over the last unit what I just taught them? And so what we're asking is for them to report out that information each quarter on how many students took the post-test and how many got Ds and Fs, so that we can, and so they can also tell the story of how that's progressing as they go through the year. So everything is about cumulative data, and we're trying to base it from the classroom rather than from quarterly benchmarking tests. Now, the last page is really, it's just a... If you have other data that you're analyzing and collecting, tell us what it is, and tell us how it tells your story of how you're making progress. So this gives them an open-ended question at the end so that they can highlight the positives that are going on inside their system. Now, this is the buildings report, and what we've done is separated our report from their report. And then, one of the things we have done, you have a page that says "example" on it. This description here is the same description that was back on the first page in the school report. Well, what we've done is, we've looked at all the areas, and we have monitoring points, so when our staff go out, if this is the description of what they're working on, then these will be the points that we're monitoring for our report. So that way, regardless of who the specialist is going to the school, we will be looking for the same pieces of information, so that way we have congruency across our specialists. That said, then what we'll report out will be in a similar format, in the sense of, we will look at the four IMO areas, and if you take a look at the ADE SIS report, then what we'll be reporting on would be the four areas that are required for the schools to report on. We would be highlighting what progress has been made, if it's minimal, we would identify what the barriers are, and then we would discuss next steps for each of those four areas. Then the follow-up to that, in page four of that report, you will find, we also, not only are we technical assistants, but to some degree, we are the monitors of the progress, we are the monitors of the ESEA waiver. So what we will be doing is adding a page that highlights if the school is moving ahead and/or the district moving ahead with the requirements within the ESEA waiver. And this is a way for us to inform the board if we have districts or schools that are not seeking to comply with the wording that's in the waiver. And then what we've done is, at the very last, are those areas that are highlighted in the ESEA waiver for compliance purposes. We don't want to be compliance monitors, because this is not about them being compliant, this is about our schools embracing a process and striving to ensure that all children, all students have both access and equity in the outcomes of education. That concludes my report. If there are suggestions, because we're still finalizing it, if you have suggestions after you look it over, if you would email Ms. Hoffman, she'll make sure that we get the information, and it's still a working document, so we will be tweaking a little bit as we go through the year, but we wanted to be more structured as we went into this school year, especially with the schools that are continuing.
Thank you, Dr. Wild, and thank you to your entire team, acknowledging that this obviously was a team effort to put this together. This is tremendously exciting. As you know, yesterday, although in a different scenario, us entertaining conversations about how forms where some people, and no one, I think, as a human being loves paperwork, are necessary and really do facilitate this process at so many different levels. So for you all to take on this endeavor and to produce such a compelling document and model is something to be applauded by all of your team, and we really do appreciate your efforts. I wanted to just see, though, if any of my colleagues had... Yes, Dr. Barr?
I actually have a question for you, Sabres. You know, you're working in academic distress. Does this feel helpful in terms of...
This feels better than anything I've felt in like 42 years. Seriously, I wanted to run down and kiss Dr. Wild, but it's crazy, the... From the beginning of this process, the amount of reports that we would be required to read just to have an understanding what was going on in a district and still really not be able to understand, because every specialist was sending in a different report and in a different style and assessing different things. And I think there was never... The thing that was most frustrating to me was the fact that there seemed to be compliance occurring or monitoring occurring without any real change. I mean, there was a lot of checking of the box, but no real movement forward, and I think what we will see with this is a very clear and realistic picture of what's going on in a district and then what needs to happen, in fact, to create change. So I'm just so thankful to the entire school improvement team, including Mr. Harvey and the net. I mean, you all have no idea, they worked so hard, and they have... They're under a big strain now because they've lost a lot of their folks, and what they do is simply amazing. So thank you so much. Seriously, this is so comprehensive and so great, and I think it will change, absolutely change the way that we all work, so thank you.
Yes, Ms. Dean?
I would be interested in knowing, maybe possibly adding to the form, what the districts and what the schools are doing as far as parental involvement, monitoring how the parents are being involved and how, what they're doing to involve the parents and community, and keeping up with that, because we all know that parental involvement is quite imperative to a child's education, so I think that would be an important aspect to monitor as well.
And as you look at the form, that is actually IMO area four, so it is included already, but we will make sure that we highlight that.
Thanks, Dr. Wild.
Chair, if I may express from the commissioner's role, my thanks to Dr. Wild and his team. This is but one other example of how all of our units are embracing the idea of, let's see how we can do our jobs better to be of better service, not just to this board, but to our districts. And Dr. Wild is doing a great job, his group's doing a great job with that, and yes, might I say, on a very, very much a shorthanded staff, we're working on to try to rectify that, but this is the attitude that you see throughout our department. And I hope that each month we can demonstrate to you that we're working hard to figure out how we can work smarter and be more... I don't want to say be more productive, because the department's always been very productive, but we want it to be meaningful in turning around the success of our schools and turning around the success of our students in particular. So I just want to say publicly, thank you, Dr. Wild, thank you, the school improvement folks, to the whole team.
Just one more question for Dr. Wild, and not having had a good chance to really look carefully at this, but one thing I think that we see when we're looking at districts in distress, or schools in distress, is the lack of support at the district level and district issues, a lack of systems in place that really stand in ways... Often we'll see a good principal in a school whose hands are tied. Will that be reflected in this report as well?
In part, the question from the principal about, tell us what support you have, the narrative itself will speak as to what support the principal received. And so if there is not much support, it will be identified by the lack of what's there as opposed to a specific asking the principal to discuss what you don't feel you're getting from the district. So some of it will be interpretive, meaning once we read the report, it should be self-evident as to whether or not the principal and staff are feeling the support. At the same time, because of the monitoring component side, we are delving a little deeper into the districts this year, and in our report, there will be some narrative reflecting on the support level provided by the district.
Miss Barr?
On that point, I mean, I think when it... I've not been on academic distress, I've said I've been on some meetings, but when it bubbles to us, it's often difficult to figure out. We can know what's wrong, but we don't always know, first off, what caused it, and secondly, is there is the kind of infrastructure and human capital in place to fix it? I guess maybe being more explicit about that issue might give us a little more evidence to use as we're making some of those toughest decisions in those direst cases where we have to make some calls about, you know, which players are a potential part of the solution, which ones are just going to be a recurrent part of the problem. So I think from my perspective, as clear as we can be, without putting people on the spot and without creating more harm and more conflict, that would be helpful in some of those decisions.
And what we might add, and the group will talk about it, but it might be possible for us to add an additional narrative removed from the specialist, because we're still trying to keep a relationship... still trying to keep a relationship between the specialist and the school and the district. So we might have to, if there is a concern coming in, then it might be that we add a component, which would be a review by myself, maybe Mr. Harvey, some others.
Because we often, you know, when we're moving towards some of those tough votes, I mean, we often get a series of emails that are looking at the same, same, same issue, set of facts from very different perspectives. And I think we need, you know, as objective set of eyes as possible. I agree, it makes sense for the specialist to be in that role, but we need something. And I think it, we often get it from you, standing where you are now, it would be sometimes nice to have that maybe on paper, which I think would give us something more, maybe something to stand on a little bit more.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That's wonderful. So I'm pleased to say, in record time, we have reached our last reports for this meeting. And on this topic of academic distress, quite appropriately, we will proceed to, and end off with Report 11, which is a report from the Special Committee on Academic Distress. Ms. Savers, you're recognized.
Thank you. We are reporting today on the Pine Bluff School District, their middle school and their high school are both in academic, identified in academic distress, which, the reason that we asked them to come and present to us, anytime we have a situation in which the only school in the district, like their middle school and their high school, students have no other choice, they must attend those schools to graduate from Pine Bluff School District, and those in academic distress is a special concern. There was a, we had a meeting with them in June, and on Dr. Wild's suggestions, we voted to ask them to get school board training, that they should have a plan in place, a strategic plan, to improve academics, to implement in this school year, and that the district leadership would work in collaboration with the school improvement unit on this plan. So when they came back last month, that was, those were specifically the issues that we discussed with them. And there seemed to be a difference in opinion between the district's report and the superintendent and the report of the school improvement unit regarding how the plan was working. Mr. Wild, I mean, Dr. Wild specifically said that, he said it was too early to evaluate the effectiveness, because, of course, it was just August. But he said the school was working on changing the culture of adults, but also needed to consider a plan to change the culture of learning by the students. There was discussion with the superintendent, Dr. Wallace, who is, has a provisional license in the state of Arkansas, which actually will, his provisional license expires in March 17, 2016. So now we're facing an extra issue here with a change in superintendent in this year. I also would say, just my personal observation, of course, would love to hear from other members of the committee, but there seemed to be a lack of communication between the chief school reform officer, who seems to be working quite hard, and the district leadership, particularly with the superintendent. And, you know, if the school improvement specialist or Dr. Wild would like to comment on that now, I think that's appropriate. But from my point of view, and like I said, it's certainly appropriate for other members of the committee to weigh in, it seems to be a situation that we often see, once we have a district in academic distress, or schools in academic distress in a district. There's a lot going on, but not in a systemic fashion that would really improve student achievement. So that, in short, is my observation, and love to hear from other members of my committee as well.
But if anyone has anything to add. Ms. Newton.
Yes, I was concerned that the emails that, and the conversations that we have with community members, and those from the central office staff, seem to be a big disconnect. We did encourage them to work more openly, whether it was just showing up in the coffee shop, or the ballgames, or whatever, because the superintendent's residence is not Pine Bluff. He does spend a great deal of time there, he said. But I think that, I'm also concerned about the inordinate amount of money that's being spent on outside consulting groups, when in fact, the ADE group can provide as good or better kinds of advice. As you know, my husband, Randy Zook, is president of State Chamber of Commerce, and they went to Pine Bluff this week, and met with the business leaders, invited any school people that wanted to come, and presented them, not with, this is my opinion, but with the actual facts, based on data, for that particular school district and those schools, and alerted the business community that they needed to get involved, that, you know, there was a school board member there, which was good, there was a former school board member there. But I know that it's going to take, as Ms. Wright encouraged us all, it'll take everybody working together. And we do have business people and parents who are wanting and help to help, it's just they need a direction, they don't know exactly what to do. And off the record, it was suggested to them that they might use that consultant money to have summer school for their second and third graders, so that by the time the child gets to fourth grade, they are reading on grade level. But that was an anecdotal suggestion that was made, and not necessarily one that would be helpful or not, who knows? But those are the observations and the information I have.
The only thing that I saw when we talked to him was, I was impressed with Ms. Smith. She seemed like that she had a plan, and if she was allowed to work and do, I think that you could see some improvements, you know, if she was allowed to, she has in mind it.
Yes, Dr. Barr.
I have a couple of questions. So on the motion, the motion was to report progress to the state board, does that mean they're coming back to your committee or to the full board?
I believe it was the academic distress committee was, I don't know.
I think that we had asked that they come back in November, and it was suggested that perhaps it was be to the full board, not just the academic distress committee. I'm sort of going on memory, but I know in the notes here, it says, "progress to the state board in November." So I think if it were just a committee, it would say, just a committee. Do you remember, Mr. Harvey?
Yes, ma'am. It was to come before the full board, that way of action needed to be taken, they would already be here.
And it would be an action agenda item?
Yes, ma'am.
My other question is on the superintendent's license issue, I mean, is there any chance of that provisional license turning into a?
Yes. Please, either Ms. Becker.
It's my understanding, we're just waiting on the confirmation of all the professional development, and I've emailed Derek to see if we've heard anything within the last month, but I've got it pulled up now, and because it is by reciprocity, it's a year to finish that. So I can get you an answer here in just the next few minutes, I may need to walk down there and check.
But there is at least a pathway to?
Yes, yes. I think, I think that the professional development is what we're lacking. The, okay. Yes. And the professional development can be done on Arkansas ideas, so I think it's just a matter of, we just need to go back and check how far along he is with that.
Any other questions or comments? The Ms. Savers, thank you so much again for your leadership and for your efforts in regards to today's report. Are there any other matters before the board this morning? Yes, Commissioner.
Have an announcement, just in an invitation to state board members who could join us for this, but on Thursday at 10:30 in the Capitol, in the old Supreme Court, the top 15 regional finalists for the Arkansas Teacher of the Year will be recognized. And at that time, the top four finalists will also be announced. So that's Thursday next week at 10:30 at the Capitol in the old Supreme Court.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And hearing no other business, then I respectfully ask for a motion to adjourn. Seconds? Ms. Savers, second. So first up, I'm Ms. Zook, and second, by Ms. Savers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, everyone. And yes, Ms. Savers, the academic distress committee, I'm assuming, is yes.
Right, and this is a happy time.
Yes.
For the distress committee, because we will be highlighting the progress happening in Bluff School District.
And how much of a break would you like between the start of that session and the conclusion of this one? So it's about 10:25, for those of you wishing to stay and observe or participate in the academic distress committee, that will commence at about 10, well, probably, let's say, 10:30, just to round it off, 10:30, please. Thank you all, thank you so much, and have a good weekend.